First, we would like to do a rule call. Mr. Lauer?
This is Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Lewis is going to be absent tonight. Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
I have not heard from Mr. O'Curry.
Okay. At this time, can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
At this time, I would like everyone to check their mobile phones to just make sure they're on stun. We're trying to keep things moving along. The purpose of this evening's public hearing is to prevent -- is to present, yeah, maybe prevent some things, information concerning proposed master plan for Rolling Hills Park and to accept comments on that plan from interested parties. This evening's hearing was advertised in the Observer Reporter on December 29th and January 8th. The hearing notice was placed on the township's website and cable television message board. A decision on adopting this master plan will be made by council as soon as February the 12th. Mr. Lauer?
Yes. As you can tell, there's -- has been a lot of interest in the master plan. In fact, the announcement for this meeting was placed on Facebook and on that Facebook page, there have been 5,340 clicks. So, a lot of people in the community are very interested in understanding what is proposed for Rolling Hills Park. As you're aware, the steering committee that was assigned the task of developing the plan has been working with representatives from Mack and Engineers. Mr. Genter from Mack and Engineers is here tonight to present what that -- what is included in that final master plan. The master plan will at some point need to be adopted by council. It will also require site plan approval by the planning commission at some point in time. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Genter.
Thanks, Paul. Yeah, I'm going to need that to go through the slides. Tonight, we're going to give you -- can I stand here?
Yep. Good. We've seen it before.
We're going to give you a slide.
You know what? That's not going to work.
Said, "We've seen it."
No, you got to --
Unless we move the microphone around because this meeting is being recorded. I need you to do this.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to be able to see the slides.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for coming out. It's kind of a sketchy night, so I know everyone had to make special plans to get here. Thank you for coming out. I want to tell you a little bit about us and how we got involved. My name's Robert Genter. I'm with Mack and Engineering Company. I'm a landscape architect. I have with me Ted Wallover from Wallover Architects and Aquatics and Jim Wattenpool. He's a park rec specialist. We're just three of the many on our team who represented the design team for the park project. We've been working with the steering committee for over six months and this is going into seven and eight here with the presentations. And this is a master plan. A master plan is a planning document for the community. It is a guide for future development. And as Paul said, this still needs to be adopted. So, what happens next? The plan is reviewed, comments are made, edits are made, then the plan gets adopted. The next step would be preliminary engineering and then final engineering. And that's separate contracts that have to go through design stages where the details get worked out. The placement, the materials, the final costs, et cetera, et cetera. But what we've done so far to date is plan a 90-acre community park with amenities, park rec, and leisure activities and programs that are here to serve everybody in the community. Young, old, able, disabled, et cetera, et cetera. This park has many things in it that your other parks do not. This is just a real quick group of things that we've gone through over the past six months. Everything from environmental review to, you know, public meeting, many staff meetings, traffic reviews, et cetera, et cetera. What we're not going to talk about tonight is the school district's plan, which is in the adjacent parcel or East McMurray Road. This park generates traffic, but it's off-peak traffic. It is not during AM, PM peak use. So, it works well with what the school's doing because it's off their peak. It also works well with the school because of shared uses that we've planned. And we've met with the school district throughout the process to work with them on activities and programs that they can use in the park. And there's even links back and forth between the properties that allow people to cross the road without, you know, going overhead the road with a bridge so they don't have to cross for safety. So, these are some of the guiding principles that were given to us to begin the project. And then, the vision for the park was really to create places for all ages, all abilities, for recreation, but also leisure activities. There are structured programs and unstructured programs here. It's all about the environmental education, art, music, community events, and individual and small group activities. We went through an analysis of the site, slopes, soils, vegetation, water courses, et cetera, et cetera. And again, what we're trying to do here is enhance and upgrade what's there. We've preserved much of the forest that is on the edges. We've kept many of the hills and slopes and enhanced the views and vistas from the ridge tops and throughout the valleys. We came up with a concept, and this was developed through the process. The -- I'll give you orientation here. This is East McMurray at the bottom of the page. The park and property is divided in half. The school's over here on this side. This is the park on this side. So, there's about 90 acres, a little more than 90 acres on each half. Half for the school, half for the park. This back here is the Arrowhead Trail. And what we're trying to do is connect this trail up through and to the park, to the other side of the road and into the school. And we do that with a pedestrian bridge here and a provision for an underpass here. And so, we're planning to make off-road connections for people to travel the Arrowhead, come into the park, go to school, and not have to cross a road. The park itself, here's the entrance off East McMurray. Park itself is a park loop road that does this, and it goes out to a future connector road. This would be a connector road that would go from East McMurray up through the site and connect on to Center Church Road. So, what we've planned is everything off of this park loop road, it's double-loaded, that's for scale and economy. It also travels up and around to the ridge top in the longest distance we could make it. That way, it's less steep and many of these trails are ADA compliant. So, we're also looking for compliance for everybody. We're going to talk about the park in three areas. We're going to talk about this southern valley that's along East McMurray, the ridge top area here, and this north valley. And I'll show you some details of that. Part of the process was go through what the community would like to see. And we reviewed the park rec comp plan and the municipality's comp plan to come up with best recommendations out of those documents. We had public meetings and we had key stakeholder interviews to generate this list. And number one was water playground, outdoor spray park, trails and connections, picnic, leisure, municipal pool, walking, hiking. This, again, the aquatic center, tennis courts, basketball, paddle, ball courts, et cetera, et cetera. So, these, all these items were planned into the project. We met with maintenance staff and tennis pro to go over details of, once this facility's developed, how things can be best maintained. And those findings were listed. And also, in the tennis facility, what would be some of the things that they would like to see. We met with the park rec department and came up with a list of needs, and those are listed here. There's playgrounds, pavilions, nature center, and it goes into coordinating programs in and around the community. Here's some existing images. If you haven't been up through there, here's the entrance going up to the clubhouse. This is on the ridge top looking west. And this is the north valley, which is down in from the great lawn. I'll show you the couple shots from that. This goes up over a hill. There's a utility line and that drops back down a very steep mountain to the Arrowhead Trail. This is a view from the ridge top looking north, and you can see the big, beautiful view. And these are some of the things that we're trying to preserve and enhance. This is the master site development plan for the 90-acre park, and it's on the board in the back as well. All these numbers that you see are items that are listed throughout to help better explain what the facilities are. Again, East McMurray is right here. Here's the municipal connector road cutting through the property. Here's the park loop road. At the ridge top, we have things like sport courts, a lodge, picnic lodge, a great lawn, and viewing decks, playgrounds. At the southern valley, we have things like dog parks, adventure play, more picnic spaces. And on this southern-facing bowl, it's a green bowl where the old tennis courts are right here if you can orient yourself. And there's a grass bowl here. This is a proposed aquatic center, and we're going to have a separate slideshow to show you the details of that a little bit later. We did road layout and profile through the project so that we were confident that the plan can be developed and grades can be minimized with the amount of earthwork disturbance. The cross-sections were cut through the park as well. And then, again, the north valley, the ridge, and the south valley, and I'll just get into the details with these a little bit more for you. North valley. This is the Arrowhead Trail, and then it connects with a winding pathway coming up into the park. These are proposed mountain bike trails. This is a trailhead connector for the Arrowhead. And part of the loop road, the back road, comes here and you drop into this valley where you can park and enter your trailhead route. You can also ride through the park as well on these shared-use paths. There's a nature center in this back valley. There's an adventure play, or nature play, I'm sorry, and enhancement to the stream bed. This is a stream that runs down to the neighbor's pond. And we're looking to use this for stormwater management as well as enhance the bed and bank and bring it back to a natural-looking state. The red things are picnic pavilions, winter sledding, winter pavilion hut in the back. And much of the north valley is environmentally oriented. There are things back there like hiking and biking and nature play. And when we go to the ridge top, you'll see there's more activity zone here where there's courts. This is indoor tennis facility, outdoor pickleball and racket, racquetball. This is basketball, deck hockey, a picnic lodge, a viewing overlook into this south valley. A great lawn area. That's a massive lawn of about two acres where it's just open space, free play, leisure, viewing, and it has fantastic views up to the north. And that's what that last photo was. Playgrounds up here. There's picnic pavilions and there's parking lots. The south valley, here you see East McMurray. This would be the entrance coming in to the township connector road, and this is the beginning of the park loop road. There's an adventure play park here. There's a dog park in the valley. And this gray piece is a trail that comes through, the trail that connects to the Arrowhead. There's play areas. There's more picnic space. And this is the 10-acre aquatic facility that we'll show you details a little bit later. We're using the existing starting house as a maintenance facility and looking to add on for some larger garages and buffering that right here between the connector road. So, we're reusing this structure and this pad where the tennis courts are. And this pad will be where the aquatic center pool will go. The parking is -- I have some numbers, but -- The road itself is about 3,000 feet long. That's the connector road from here all the way through, so it's quite significant. And there's over 200 parking spaces in this aquatic center, and there's 500 other spaces throughout the park. And if you look at that, you don't see a Walmart parking lot anywhere. They're divided up. They're terraced and they're segmented near where people need to go. So, there's quite a bit of parking. We've also planned for large community events here too where the ridge top might be used for major parking and the great lawn could be used for some large community gatherings. And this park loop road can be used as the double-stack vendor space. And instead of having them at your other park, which park was it? Piggerswood? This way, you'll be able to have it here and have dry feet because you can walk on the road. And using the adjacent school district's property, we'll be able to park and bus people back and forth. Connections. This is all about trails, sidewalks, and bike routes. There's a mile and a half of sidewalks. There's about three miles of shared-use trails, and we have those both in asphalt and stone, crushed limestone. And mountain bike trails. There's almost two miles of mountain bike trails. These are the types of surfaces that you might see out there. And picnic spaces, this is part of the picnic space on that south valley. East McMurray's at the bottom of the page. The dog park. The dog park separated into two lots so that when the grass gets worn out, you close that off and shift them over to the other side. That way, people and animals are never in the mud. And there's a small dog park in the middle and two larger dog parks on the outside. This goes a little bit into the woods as well as in the open space. And really, dog parks are places for people and dogs. And we put it that way because they really are social places. And these are all the items within the dog park. There's 50 parking spaces for that facility. There we go. Okay. Adventure play. This is for kids, and again, it's another social space for adults as well as a play area for kids. So, it's very similar. It has shade shelters, water, safe places for kids to play. And you can see all the items up here. It's about one and a half acres. This is the aquatic facility and water play area. And our second show, slideshow is going to get into the great detail with this. But you can see, this is where the tennis courts used to be, so we're using that pad as part of the development to help save earthwork costs. This is the northern ridge top, and we have great lawn and court games, a lot of picnic spaces. The pavilion types are listed here. Everything's ADA compliant. We have viewing platforms located here and here to take advantage of the big views and vistas. The parking spaces, 100 spaces up here in this area. And we have another 84 at the lodge. And the picnic lodge itself would be something that you could lease out and rent. It's also a place that would have indoor enclosed facilities. And then, this is the big view from the great lawn, which would be here overlooking that northern valley. And here's the view. The great lawn's here. Here's the viewing platforms looking out and over. This is the parking lot down below in the loop road that goes around the park. So, you get this big view, unobstructed. Everything's terraced down and out of the way. And then, further down the hill, you have some shared-use paths, and this gets into the winter sledding areas. These are just some concepts of, you know, nice type of furniture that might be bolted to the ground up there. And those would be located here and here. Places to play and picnic. All these stars represent places to play and picnic all over that 90 acres. Court games. There's six hard court areas for indoor. There's courts at the plaza. There's a plaza for people to sit in the shade and watch or to wait for a tournament to end or whatever the program is. There's tennis, pickleball, platform tennis, bocce court over here, volleyball, sand volleyball here, basketball, and deck hockey. North valley is more about environmental and green infrastructure. We're looking to enhance this stream and use it for stormwater management, but also make a wet basin out of it. That way, it could be frozen in the winter for skating. And it's right next to our sledding hill, which is north-facing, keeps the snow longer as opposed to where the aquatic center is. It's a south-facing, so it could be warmer. This is a view of the north valley. That view's from about here, looking right down this valley. You can see how beautiful that is. And the intent here is to enhance the beauty that's there. Here's all the items in the nature play center. There might be a small lawn near the center itself, and that could be used for small gatherings, for education, for little kids, like tots, to play. And the older kids can play in the valley down here in the nature play area. There's an agility course for bikes. The mountain bike trails are just to the north of this. And the winter fest hill with a winter lodge with a fireplace and the potential for skating here. This is what some of the nature play might look like, at-grade slides, place to climb and run and build things and swim. This is what the bike agility course might look like. And you can see some of the ramps and jumps, things like that. Programming. Jim Wattenpool and Shell put together quite a bit of programming for the park itself. There are 29 different programs that can be run in all the facilities. And there's a projected income generated from the programs for each year. And so, we've listed the cost and the revenue and the net return. So, it's positive that you could come up with about $11,000 or $12,000 every year running programs. And that includes aquatic programs. The budget, the infrastructure for the park is here. It's about $2.5 million. And then, we broke it up into south valley, ridge, and north valley.
Can you blow that up? I mean, the numbers are so small, some of us are having problems reading from this distance.
I can blow that.
You cannot?
I don't have the controls to do that. I can read them to you, though. The south valley is $9 million, a little over $9 million. And that is the adventure play area, dog park, picnic and playgrounds, a lot of pavilions. I think there's about 45 different pavilions. And the aquatic facility, the aquatic center. The aquatic center is about $10 million, so that's a big part of it. The ridge top is $7 million, and about four and a half is the indoor tennis center. And the reason we go through the detail of this is so that as this project moves forward into the future, the township has the ability to identify each item and each cost, and that helps with prioritizing what can be funded, what should be funded, and what future costs might be if you don't fund it now. So, everything was very detailed, down to shade trees that are planted. So, we have in here roads, utilities, buildings, trails, concrete sidewalk, everything, benches, grills, tables. And then, the north valley's about 1.7. The big, big item there is the nature center. And then, we've even listed contingencies at the bottom. Final design and engineering. Like I talked about earlier, this is the planning stage. You'll need to get into final design and engineering and permitting as well as construction, inspection, and management. And these details were given to the park rec committee and to the project committee. So, they have all that.
And Bob, I think one of the things that's important for people to understand is that the township is, and nor has the steering committee, suggested that all of this is going to be done in, you know, one contract that brings this park to its total build-outs in a short period of time. If you look back on Peterswood Park, there have been a number of master plans for that park, and it has been developed over time. And that would be the same thing that should be the community's expectation with regard to this park, is that it will be a process that will take many years before the vision that's in this master plan is completely realized.
And like I said earlier, the master plan is really a guide, a very detailed guide, to help the township build out this facility. And we've gone through with the township to identify even the programming and the maintenance and operation of the facility so that they have a very good idea of not only the initial construction costs that have to happen, but the maintenance and operation costs that will happen as well. And so, here's some recommended priority projects. Usually, in every development, it's the infrastructure first, the loop road, the utilities, SWMS, stormwater management, that would happen. And these could be happened, this could be developed in stages, not these numbers all at once, but maybe you do the front side first or you do the loop road first and you don't do the nature road next. But we've given the township the ability to choose by breaking out each item and giving each cost in that list. So, you can see, it's a big project. It's a grand plan for the future. And we put together an action list with the school going in first. One of the things we want to make sure we do here is protect the park's topsoil and root zones from compaction. So, we're trying to develop a park that's environmentally conscious so we don't want to compact all our topsoil before we even get started. So, that's very important to me as a landscape architect and should be to you as a resident. You don't want to have to pay for the stuff that's already there. You want to preserve it and keep it. And then, you look at some of the other things like the connector road or that loop, that road that goes through the two properties. Finalize the YMCA coordination and begin fundraising and -- Finalize the YMCA coordination and begin fundraising and for the project priorities. And then the loop road itself. So that's the park. We're gonna, can you load the aquatic center? We're gonna show you the aquatic center in detail that went into that. And that's that ten acre south facing slope within the middle of the park. And Ted is going to present that. And then we'll do, do you guys do Q and A?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll do questions and answers.
When we reviewed the Peters 2020 and the Parks and Recreation Plan, an outdoor swimming pool was the number one requested component in the township. We vote for this study. So the demand has been here for quite some time to develop some type of an aquatic facility for the township. So again, the idea of the outdoor swimming pool for the summer and shoulder season use was really the primary focus of this study. We did talk about the possibility of an indoor facility and the kind of impact that that may have. But the reality was the overall cost of a development like that was overwhelmingly high in comparison to developing a ninety-day, a hundred-day summer season. And then we have the water playgrounds, which can actually take care of some of the shoulder season also used in the spring and also into the fall. What helps with that is the fact that you don't have to have staffing for that. It's an open area without the need for lifeguards and things of that nature because there's no standing water in those facilities. So we looked at a lot of programs. What are the kind of things we wanted to see in the facility? What was important to the community in terms of the kind of functions that we incorporated into the facility? But also looking at how the building could be, and the pools could be developed in such a ways that income could be generated for the township as it operates these facilities. Also, teaching, water safety, physical fitness, all of those components were thought as very important. Teaching kids how to swim is one of our most important things that we can do in recreation today. Swimming is still the number one cause of accidental deaths in children. So that is one of the things that a community pool can really have a strong impact in. So that was one of the driving forces that we looked at in the designs. And the designs really reflect that in terms of the depth profiles that you see in the pool. And we'll go through those features. The key components that we must have in any aquatic facility is a bathhouse pavilion with lockers, state-of-the-art showers and support facilities. I can't tell you how many times you've come into a community and the number one complaint from moms is, "I won't use that bathhouse." You know, if they're not well-designed, if they're not clean, if they're not maintained properly, that's really a stumbling block in many, many aquatic facilities. Having accessible parking. As Bob mentioned at Boll, it really gave us some opportunity to really develop a different types of access to the site. And when we started looking at that location, one of the things that was really important to us is how people gain access to the pool. And when you look at the access off of Murray Road, it's a very, very short hop to get onto that aquatic site area. And it really did work out quite well. And we'll go through some of the various design solutions that we worked through. But the tot and leisure pools, having beach access where kids can just walk right into the pool and have strong interaction between mothers and families and children. I'm a very strong believer that parents have a responsibility when they take kids to a pool, not to just drop them off, but if you've got toddlers, you need to basically be involved with that child when they're at the facility. So designing a pool that has features that encourages that, I think is a very important part of what this concept design was intended to do. Exercise, teaching, those types of things, you'll see we've addressed that. And then activity pool, a place where kids can have fun. Water slides, climbing walls, in-pool seating areas, things where folks can just congregate and socialize in the environment. As we mentioned, the three-season water playgrounds. Having that shoulder season is really important, both before the pool opens and after. We were looking at some of the aquatic programs that could be developed, as Bob mentioned. Jim Wattenpool worked through this with my wife also, with the rec department, to come up with various opportunities for income generation. The aquatic programs obviously are a very important part of what we want to stress. The township, when they operate a pool, has to think about this as running it like a business. Yes, it's an asset for the community, but it has to cover the cost of operation. And we believe the features and the kind of activities that are being planned in a facility like this, of this scale, can be covered through the kind of programs that are basically generated. The initial concept was for a smaller pool. We looked at how could we develop a small body of water that would meet the minimum township demands. When you look at the National Parks and Recreation Association and the American Planning Association, they have a kind of a rule of thumb that anywhere between two and a half to three percent of a township or municipal population is the number that you should shoot for in terms of occupancy of the pool. This particular pool was a little bit below that six thousand or seventy-eight hundred number. When you looked at township, the population, the sweet spot was between seventy-six and seventy-eight hundred baters. With, for seven hundred and sixty baters, not hundreds. Seven hundred and sixty baters was the number that we were shooting for. This pool shoots, has an occupancy right around six hundred. There's a small indoor teaching pool in this particular concept, and then a bathhouse area, and then the standalone water playground. See the array of parking? And that steps down with the site, which is really kind of interesting with that bowl. It allows us to take advantage of the natural grade and the change of topography in order to get the site to work. And these are some of the kind of features that you would see in a pool like this. You know, the bathhouse structure, kind of give you sort of a sense of the scale of a building that might be developed in a facility like this. The water slides, really these are the kind of features and functions that really can provide a great deal of interest in the facility for the patrons and users. The tumble buckets, this has been a feature that we put in over at Cranberry Township. It's been a tremendous success. There's a cycle where that bucket fills, and the kids disappear and then all of a sudden they start to congregate in that area. And it's just been a grand success for them in terms of keeping kids active and in the active zone of the pool. This was the second concept. This is a medium concept. And we actually did present all of these at the first public hearing that we had here in this room. And we got comments on each of the options. What we looked at in this particular solution was, is that this is where that current flat plateau of the old tennis courts were. And if we had an area that didn't require us to do a lot of excavation or to do a lot of fill, we really felt that that was something we should look at and see, how could we take that land and that topography and how it's basically set up and utilize that to create a concept for a community pool? And this basically shows the bathhouse structures. There's a pavilion out here for picnics and things of that nature, parties. And then we have a shallow water beach access pool, a four-lane, twenty-five-yard lap lane pool, which would be compliant with NCAA or National Federation of High Schools standard lengths for swimming. And so that four-lane pool could be used for training, could be used for exercising. We did look at some different profile options on how to make that work within the space. And then we have an interconnecting body of water, which is the large activity zone where we have water slides and climbing walls and features of that nature that provide for a lot of activity. You'll notice there's no diving in these pools. That's one of the things that we had talked about. Diving could be incorporated into that body of water because of the size of it. But it was not a high priority item for the committee. And so we really have kind of focused on activities where families and kids can use those pools on a very aggressive basis, so to speak. And again, the parking array, as you can see, kind of steps down the hill. And then we have the space set aside for an active stormwater retention. It would be a filled basin. And again, these are the kind of functions and features that you might see in a pool like this. It was similar to what we had in the first concepts slide. Then we looked at developing a much larger facility. This body of water is roughly fifteen thousand square feet of water. It has a full six-lane pool. It has a beach, large-scale beach access, a lazy river in the center, water slides and climbing walls. Much, much larger body of water, much more aggressive from a budgetary standpoint to look at this facility. This pool can easily accommodate up to fifteen hundred residents. So it really is quite a bit larger than what the national average would be for a community of this size. Yes, sir.
But did you include a waiting pool?
In this case, no. What these pools do, you have the beach access. And those beach access pools are separated from the balance of the water. So in the case of an accident, it's on a separate filtration system and can be treated and put back in service much quicker than taking the entire facility down. And that's why you'll see there's two bodies of water, two filter systems in all of these features. And again, when you look at the water playground area, that in and of itself serves as kind of a waiting pool type thing. So there's zones in there for infants, there's zones in there for smaller children.
Don't let me get you disconnected. You're going with your presentation. That was just a spur of the quick.
No problem. And then as a result of the meeting that we had with the community, we started to fine-tune the option for the site where the old tennis courts were. So we began to review and how we could orient that site a little differently. The bathhouse building now is more north to south in its orientation, with a main entry right through a drop-off zone out here. And then we had the beach access pool with a picnic pavilion directly adjacent to it. This structure here is a concession building that also has a party room and multipurpose space in it. So again, the idea of having birthday parties and other smaller scale events in that building along with concessions was planned for that space. And then there is an open alley that is basically between the shallow area up here and directly connects to the beach access. And again, we wanted to have that visual connection between the pools and the water playground so that there was a much more close relationship if families there with kids that want to be in both locations. Hard to pull mom and dad to be in two different places at one time. But if we do have the ability to have some type of a visual connection between the two, we felt that was an important component. And then again, the water slides. And they're basically, this concept basically shows a pair of matching slides. So the kids can actually use those to compete. They have timing systems now in the slides so that they can actually put their time up. You'll see what their times are coming down through the slides. So it becomes kind of a fun activity for the kids. Oops, sorry. This area here is kind of a depressed area, taking advantage of the grade. There's retaining along this area to separate the parking area. And this is the filter building below this area, the bathhouse, would serve for all of the supplies, filtration, back of the house activities. Then again, we talked about how we could take this site. And what we did is we looked at the cross-section through the site. And by allowing a five percent cross-slope in each one of these parking bays, we're able to transition the site without a tremendous amount of excavation. So we think this really tends to work. And this is not an exaggerated scale. This is basically horizontal and vertical are at the same scale. So it kind of gives you a real sense of how that would nestle into that hillside. That pool really does work well. And I think when you look at it, as Bob mentioned, the south-facing orientation allows to keep the pools in full view of the sun. So there's nothing that's going to block the sun except where we do purposely place sun screening. And that's something we do in all of our facilities today. One of the things that we heard loud and clear from a number of people at the meeting was that they wanted a competitive pool. And what we did is we tried to look at what would happen to the site if we increased the number of lanes in that four-lane exercise area. And by, you can go either to a four-lane or an eight-lane or a six-lane pool. So this site will support any of those options in here. So that's really something that gives the township some flexibility. But one of the things you have to understand is as we increase the size of the pool, we increase the occupancy, we increase the demands on the building, we increase the demands on parking. So there has to be a, I think, a common ground or a size that's comfortable, both for the community to be able to have the activities that they would like to have, but also that the pool complex doesn't become so costly, that doesn't become a viable option for the community. So what we ultimately ended up suggesting in our final plan was that the, if competitive swimming is not deemed to be the driving force, then the four-lane pool, and most, a lot of our budget numbers were based upon the four-lane pool, and then the activity pool, and then the beach access pool with the tumble buckets. You can see that the water playground is located adjacent to the entry of the building and the parking. All of our ADA parking is basically grouped directly adjacent to the structure. And one of the major changes we made was we created a boulevard so that we have in-traffic and out-traffic at this location. And then we have, through all the parking lots, there's a collector loop that comes back and dumps cars back onto the loop road. So on a peak period, at the end of the day, folks are leaving, they have the option of coming out and going up towards Center Church or coming off the boulevard and going down towards Murray Road. So there's really plenty of stacking space. And we have, I think, a great opportunity with the way the site's designed to be able to make sure that we don't create traffic problems with potentially two hundred vehicles leaving. Now, you'll never have a situation where all two hundred cars leave at the same time. But we have to plan for that. We have to look at what's the worst-case scenario. But this kind of scheme provides great access to the site and from the site. If we go to the six-lane pool, which is the other option we've looked at, you'll see that we picked up another bay of parking and a small loop in here. So now we've enhanced the exiting from the site and entry to the site. We've picked up the additional two lanes. Now, this pool would be compatible with competitive swimming. You'd be able to host meets here, you'd be able to have a swim team, you'd be able to do summer events and still have water open for the folks that want to swim without competing with a competition or a swim meet. So that was the concept with this. And we actually, whoops, sorry. We actually do show where you can put temporary bleachers into sight. There's enough room between the pools so that we could actually encourage competition of that, if that is something that the township ultimately would like to achieve. In order to create a pool that has as much programming area as possible and still have a pool that's deep enough to meet requirements for safe starting and safe turning in a competitive venue, this was the profile, I'm sorry, the wrong button. This is a profile that we've used on a number of occasions where we have a two-meter-deep pool. It transitions up to a three-and-a-half-foot-deep area and then transitions down to four-foot-six at the far end. And that allows for kids to do kick turns and ample depth for competition. We have ample depth off the starting block. And as I mentioned, if you really wanted a diving pool, this could be dropped to twelve feet and you could put an actual diving well in here if that was something the township wanted to look at. But I think in regards to the kind of program requests that we've seen, swimming really was the competitive swimming and lap swimming was a very important part of what the community was telling us they'd like to see. So this kind of profile really does give us the ability to gain ADA-compliant access into the pool with a secondary means of ADA. We'd use a lift as the primary. We did not show a ramp into this pool. And again, where we talk about the interconnection between the lap pool and the activity pool, there is a way that we can potentially get all of our ADA compliance in that other body of water since you can still transition from one pool to the next. Talk about the water playground. The water playground really is kind of an interesting animal. We've worked very closely with Vortex International, which is one of the leading manufacturers of water playgrounds and water playground equipment. And generally speaking, what we find in most facilities is we have an active play zone for older kids where there's a lot of different types of activities, spray jets, water cannons, things of that nature that are basically manipulated by the user. We have a climbing zone, which is again for older children, but it has a lot of different water features and activity areas within that. We try to create some type of a transition zone where we can isolate smaller kids. And this interactive area here is really designed more for the little toddlers and things of that nature where we can have interactive play toys and water plays with smaller children. You don't have little guys getting knocked over by bigger kids as they're tearing through this active play zone. This is a filter and bathroom structure here. This building would have its own ADA-compliant restrooms. And then there's a filter structure, or a, excuse me, a picnic structure adjacent to that too. And again, those can then be programmed, they can be rented out for parties and things of that nature. And if it's coordinated with the concessions, those are things where income generation can really be an important part of the process. With the tumble buckets, the various types of equipment are there that can be incorporated into the pool, really give the kids a heck of a lot of different opportunities for fun. into the pool really give the kids a heck of a lot of different opportunities for fun and, and a lot of wow factor. Again, the climbing walls, we're seeing these become very, very popular in a lot of our pools today where the kids can actually compete. We can use dual climbing walls and have competitions. Again, great physical fitness. And the Aqua Klein Company has been a very, very well received product in the industry. Sun shades. We think it's very important that whenever you put families and kids in the sun, we give them the opportunity to get out of the sun. What we're knowing, what we know now about skin cancer and the effects of UV, having shade structures around pools are very, very important. We really think this is something that must be considered in any design that the township would move forward with. ADA compliance. Again, because these pools are going to be more than 300 linear feet in the, the large pool, we'll have to have two independent means of, and distinct means of ingress. The smaller pool, which has the beach access, there will be walk-in, but there will have to be a section of that that does have rails that makes that comply with the ADA guidelines. ADA is not a code responsible, code, it is a federal law. So this isn't something we, we take lightly. These pools must meet these guidelines. And again, as Bob mentioned, we ended up with a, kind of a breakdown, it's very similar to what Bob did in terms of the different types of, of costs and the different elements within the pool. The bottom line is, is with all the bathhouse facilities, with all the concessions, all the site development, parking, utilities, the four lane pool, it comes in around, I think that's 9.7 million. And then it's 10.1 for the six lane pool. There's a lot of great delta between the, the six lane and the four lane pool. You'd think there might be more in that, but there really isn't. But it does impact other areas because we have to make other parts of the structure larger. And that's all built into the numbers as we go through that. And again, all of this is in the report. It's all outlined specifically for the, the board. And that's the final question.
All right. Thank you very, very much. At this time, we will open up the floor for any public comments. We are going to limit those to, to three minutes and try to enforce it as best as we're able. At this time, can I see a show of hands of those who would like to speak tonight? Okay. We'll start in the back of the room, on the left side. Yeah, you gotta come up. That's one of the requirements. And please state your name and address. Can you turn the mic back around?
I have to recuse this way. I'm Jenny Barnicot, 103 Trillion Place, Venetia.
And I'm Vita Comer, 103 Soft Shadow Lane, Venetia.
And we'll be quick, but we did notice on the, the plan that there is a place for platform tennis, it's sometimes called paddle tennis. And I, I just, we wanted to be sure everyone understands what that is and the tremendous opportunity there is for the whole community, including children, to get involved in this sport. Currently, Mount Lebanon and Upper St. Clair Townships have municipal courts for platform or paddle tennis.
Yeah, Mount Lebanon has four courts. I think they're going to build another one. St. Clair Township has two. And we presently, most of us play at Ballerbrook Country Club, but-
They're shopping public.
Right, right. And do we know, I mean, does, do you know what a paddle, is everyone familiar with that, what that is?
Should explain where-
Well, you, I think a lot of people are familiar with paddle tennis, but it is a all-weather sport as well.
All-weather sport. It's probably started in the Northeast, but it's-
Did you have some pictures you wanted to show?
Well, just to show you like-
So you got a magazine?
Yeah, well, this is Platform Magazine.
You could put it down here if you want.
Just lay it in the middle of that table right there.
There's such a thing as Platform Magazine?
Oh, yes. This is big.
Platform tennis magazine, right. So this just shows-
Just lay it down. Just lay it down, we'll figure it out.
Okay. And just want to say how it talks about starting a high school paddle club. Oh, I got you, sorry.
This article is, uh, starting a junior program, which Fox Chapel, Swickley, other townships, uh, this is becoming a big sport for kids. It's easy to play because the ball doesn't bounce over their heads, it's contained within fences, they can play off of the fences, so similar to racquetball in that. But it's a great sport for kids all the way up through seniors.
And we have men's leagues, women's leagues, mixed. Kids could do it. And, but normally when you play teams and we travel back and forth, you, there's four lines at play at a time. So really, we should have four courts. So I don't know what, there wasn't a plan?
It's had six.
Platform tennis?
Yeah, it did say six at one point, but still.
We'll be happy with four.
Okay, we're gonna cut to-
We'll cut to all of it. Damn, we're saving money already.
We're here to help you.
Yeah.
And now, and then obviously, most places now, you have a hut that you, we call it a hut, but some of them are like ski chalets, honestly. They have TV, I mean, so you can imagine, you can use that for-
It's a big swing from a chalet to a hut.
Well, anyways, the APTA, which is American Platform Tennis Association, does have grants that they've given to some organizations, so $10,000, $15,000.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Take your magazines, you know. I'm looking to my subscription to Platform Magazine. All right. I think the next person in the back, right there, yes. Yeah, I'm trying to move the left side and then go to the right side. Then there's the upside.
Hi, my name is Lisa Dollard, and this is-
Charlene Salas.
And I'm one of the tennis pros at the Peters Township Tennis Courts. And I want to talk about pickleball. And I don't know if any of you have played, ever played pickleball? Anybody? Okay. Well, in 2010, there were 110,000 players. And, and now in 2016, there's over 2,500 players. And it is growing so fast.
And there's a pickleball magazine too?
There is. A full color pickleball magazine that comes out six times a year, and it's an international sport. And what I can say is that I'm hoping they can put these pickleball courts in. I saw that you had four. I'm hoping, hoping you can do six to eight. I know on one court of a tennis court, you can fit four pickleball courts. And that means 16 players on one court. And it is growing so fast. There's so many players that used to be at the courthouse that you had to wait in line because there was 50 players down there waiting to get on a court. And, so my husband and I travel all around, we're national players, we're, we're also certified as pickleball instructors. And at the US Open, they had to book the players to play in the tournament. There's 2,000 players that are playing in Naples, and it was, the draw was sold out in 10 minutes. Now, I'm telling you, this sport is growing so fast that it's going to make your head spin. And I'm hoping that when you put in the pickleball courts, I'm hoping that you can start with six to eight and give room that can grow more courts because there's a lot of people that are asking about it.
You need to address, it's also drawn to the school system.
Oh, yes. And it's also growing in the school systems, and every school is using that as their PE, as their curriculum. So it's not just seniors, it's all ages. It's all kids and students in all the high schools.
Ms. Dollard, could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
You said that you could fit a certain number on a tennis court?
Yes.
Are you implying that it could be a tennis court one time and then it could be pickleball? Or are you just using that as an example of space?
I'm using that as an example of space, but you can also, if you put the lines down vertically on, on the tennis court, you can fit four courts, four pickleball courts on one tennis court. So another thing I'd, I'd like to suggest is I know that there is the courts right beside the high school, and they're really not being used. And if you just would redo it and put asphalt down-
No, no, it's a school district.
It's a school district, okay.
Good suggestion.
Okay. Well, um-
It's been brought up before, so forth.
I know it's with Charlene, with her forte. She's so awesome in, in getting people involved in tennis and growing it. And a number of players are interested in pickleball, so I thought it would be great revenue.
Appreciate your passion, and I'm gonna read my subscription here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. I believe this gentleman here-
Okay. After all those sports I didn't even know about, it might cost money. I have a very low budget-
Do you have a magazine too?
No, I don't. Again, we have a scouting magazine. I'm Paul Suchgo from Oak Ridge Drive. I'm representing the scout troop 1313 at St. Ben's and the venturing crew, which is co-ed. We also have at St. Ben's. And our request would be, and I didn't note if the, I thought it was a fire pit. I don't know if there's a fire pit. But I don't think there's anywhere in the township where scouts can camp overnight, just a clearing where we can put tents up and maybe have a little fire pit. So it really doesn't cost much money, it's just a matter of allowing us to stay overnight. They're like, like, oh, the park, the township park has one place in the whole, actually, Mingoes the only place we can do that, like in the public parks today. So it's a very modest request, but I think given the number of scouts, there's a couple other troops in the township as well, as well as girl scouts. Assuming they camp still, that'd be great. So I would just wonder if there's a, a place we could possibly put, just a flat area where, where there's some tents and a fire pit, so that would just-
Mr. Macklin?
I'm Mr. Gantler. The North Valley would be a good place for that. Is where the winter sledding, you know, is the, the major play. And there's a winter pavilion with a proposed fireplace. And there's a mountain bike trails in the other-
Okay, yeah, the environmental, so there would be a place. So it'd be just a matter of the, I guess, parks and record, we would coordinate the permitting for the roads. Your permitting, so how would we do that? Okay, that'd be the only cost, if you want to call it that.
Did you state your name and address?
Yes, I did. I probably said it too fast, I'm a bad habit there, but I'm Paul Suchgo from Oak Ridge Drive, yeah. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
I'll tell you that I suggested that we put one at Peters Lake Park. For years, I've said we should cut in a trail through some of those trees and build a pavilion. Would have those types of facilities. And so far, it hasn't.
Maybe if we had a township manager that was interested in scouting.
Yeah, we'll do that one now. All right, we'll see. I think it's a good idea.
All right. Mr. Curry, can you do me a favor and pull your mic down? Because we will miss you on TV.
Oh, you want to hear that, right?
No, that's okay. That's just I'm happy.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, well, I think Mr. Books.
I'm overwhelmed. Never in my imagin-
You gotta say your name and address.
Ron Books, 855 Bebop Road, Venetia, Pennsylvania, 1523671204. I'm overwhelmed. I couldn't have imagined this kind of a project being created in my life. It's just overwhelming. And I'd like to see the figures on the proposed costs of that item, of this park. And it's current dollars? We don't know. Okay.
Well, it's current dollars. I mean, again, this is a master plan, just like-
I understand, I understand, Jim, you're interrupting. Again. I'm overwhelmed, and I see that the priority seems to be the pool. And I had some thoughts. First of all, unique to the situation, I heard the YMCA was involved. How would they be involved in this project?
Am I allowed to talk now?
No. I'd like to know that. The second thing is, how many other alternatives are there? For example, in reviewing some of the information I found on the internet, I simply looked at the pool at Mineral Beach. And I wondered if it would be appropriate for us to approach them to see if we couldn't put a cover over that pool so that it could be used year round. This pool would only be available three months of the year.
It's a lot of money to have it being closed.
It's a lot of money anyway, we're talking a lot of money.
It's a lot of work to be closed.
Well, I don't know. The point, the point is, that's another possibility that would provide us with pool space 12 months of the year rather than three months of the year. And I think that would be most appropriate. When you start talking about competitive swimming and things of that nature, that's a year-round sport. You can't do it three months of the year and hope to be competitive for the full 12 months. Anyway, there are other options I think should be looked at, certainly the YMCA is another. My daughter works part-time at the Cranberry Facility, and she tells me that the YMCA does a wonderful job of managing that. So with that in mind, I'd, I'd like to hear more about the YMCA's involvement. Thank you.
On, on the issue of YMCA, if you read in the papers initially, they were cutting a deal with North Strabane to build a facility in North Strabane, one of their parks. Upon the news of us purchasing the Rolling Hills property, they approached us with interest. And perhaps, if you recall, North Strabane originally voted down the YMCA deal from the dollars involved. So it was then approved, then the Y put it on hold in their discussions with us. We're having ongoing discussions with the YMCA disjuncture, and final decision on that has not been certainly determined. But we are in discussions with the YMCA. As is North Strabane, still, I believe.
Actually, they've withdrawn.
There you have it. All right. Right here, yes.
Good evening, I'm Brian Hart. I live on Center Church Road. Just two, I guess, two questions more for, for the architecture and aquatic firms. One, you were talking about the, the national statistics on, on how you size a pool, the square footage, based upon the occupancy. I guess my question is, is, I have a traffic, transportation background, and when we build a road or design something, you look at 20 years in the future for a design year. This is one of municipalities in the South Hills that has still an amazing potential for growth, probably more than what it's grown out right now as compared to Upper St. Clair, Mount Lebanon. When you guys looked at those requirements or those percentages, was that based upon the existing?
2025.
2025? Okay. That's, that was the one question. Secondly, I'm interested from a cut and fill, which is your earthwork that's on the job. Is that balanced just on, on the park side to try and minimize those costs? Or is, is there an opportunity to work with the school district side? Because it seems like there's going to be a lot of earthwork over there, a lot of top soil that's going to be removed, and can that be possibly stockpiled over here and used when you're building out a lot of these green areas?
Yes. We've, we've been in contact with schools throughout their design process and ours. And that road that goes through the middle, the two properties, that's been accounted for as well, with the earthwork. And the school, and they actually have some earth they need to move, and so we can accept that here for our group.
But the thing that I would want to point out is that the school district's timetable is much more accelerated than our timetable. And, and that work on their end of the property is most likely to be in advance of what we're doing.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, to, to look at one major, one major plot of land that's so close to each other, but to look at it with blinders on and not possibly talk those, because it's the school district in here. Trucking, again, from a transportation background, when you're doing earthwork moving activities, there's a lot of cost involved in trucking away or bringing in soils.
Yeah, you want to have to truck off.
Well, but it sounded like that if you're moving, just because the school's going a year or two early, if you have to truck all of that off the site, and then again, you're bringing some back in, if it makes sense to talk and possibly store some of that soil and then use it for future, that's all, that's all I wanted to make sure it's considered.
And, and what is being coordinated is the construction of the road and the school district construction. But one of the things that, that this master plan does, as Bob alluded to, is it takes into account the, the existing contours. And so when you get onto the park side, if it's developed as the way it's being proposed here, it doesn't involve with the amount of earth moving that you would see on the school district side, because the school district is talking about a much larger structure and parking lots to accommodate that zone. But I, the two places where there are significant earth moving, school district project and the road, and the road project is actually going to be done by the township, and those two will be coordinated.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, in the back. Uh, not you.
I'm sorry.
The young lady in the back.
Hello. My name is Dana Berliner, Fox Run Drive in Venetia. Just a couple of questions. I was at the hearing down in North Strabane when the YMCA was considering down there. And one of the questions- And one of the questions that was pertinent on the council was the fact that they were wanting funds. Are we with that, considering giving taxpayer funds to help them with them being a for-profit facility?
Yes.
That was the big hitch, because they're for-profit and they want help to put it in, and yet they...
Well, wait, I think the Y, the Y is a nonprofit.
I mean, they charge a large amount to use the facility, right?
Well, I don't know about large amounts, but yes, they charge a fee.
Yeah, okay, because my question is this. We also own a facility, a gym here in Peters Township. We're a different style altogether, so it's not, that's not my concern. But my concern is this. There are a lot of fitness facilities, from studios to big box to whatever, around being saturated. And then you had the big one come in town, which is, you know, extremely cheap. And it has hit our gym hard, as well as many other places. So my concern is, if you're, if they're gonna build, if there's gonna be enough people, sustainability, to cover the costs that it would take to run these things, this big facility with membership, you know, dudes going in, because it's hit, and I've talked to a lot of different people, and it's just that people, you know, they fall into just saying, hey, it's cheap, you know, it's 10 bucks a month, you know, out of my driving, it's 10 bucks a month. So cheaper is just pulling people away from the area, even if it's a drive. And so I'm just concerned about the taxpayer money going into a facility that may not be able to, you know, take on the amount of people or the amount of money coming in to sustain it.
And we've been very cognizant in the past on privately-run...
Yeah, I mean, we're completely different, you know.
Workout facilities, we've not added anything in the CRC, though there has been a request and demand for such equipment, and we've not done it for that very reason, because we do have a lot of businesses in the township. Mr. Law, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, one of the things you should know is the YMCA shares your concern from this perspective...
It's kind of a big one.
That they are not prepared to proceed without first being able to do a study that demonstrates the market feasibility for the project.
Yeah, I know you guys were talking about balancing numbers and making sure that everything can be covered, and it's hit really, really hard. So, you know, not just us, but other ones in the, you know, in the area, so just...
Well, as we know, Upper St. Clair has struggled at times with their...
Yeah, yeah, and there's a lot of smaller, you know, entities as well.
Right.
So just, you know, keep it, keep it in mind, because it's, especially if taxpayer monies are gonna be allocated.
Absolutely.
It's important that, you know, it covers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I might've got lost track here of hands up, there was some...
Is he down right here?
Yes, you, sir.
My name is Bill Young. I live on East McMurray Road. I live directly across the street from the proposed plan, okay? And I was curious what the rationale is for creating a new entrance rather than using the entrance that was there for the country club for years.
It's a good question, and Mr. Law?
And the answer is that when the traffic engineer looked at that, they believed pulling it down the hill would create a situation where there was additional site distance and room for stacking if need be, if in fact it turns out to be a signalized intersection. Right now, the township is taking proposals to do the engineering work associated with both the intersection of East McMurray Road and the connector road, as well as the intersection of Center Church with the connector road, and designing the road itself. We're, on this Monday coming up, we will have on our agenda a recommendation with regard to the award of that contract. Council's been very cognizant of the concern of people on East McMurray Road and what that means for access into the property. One of the first tasks that the engineer needs undertake is an alternatives analysis, and in part, it has to look at how one could mitigate the impacts on our neighbors along East McMurray Road. So I don't know that we have any specific answers to give you at this point, but we certainly understand what the question is, and we will be looking at that.
The other question I have is, has there been a review of alternative entrances? And there are alternatives, I can tell you.
Well, yes, I mean, we've looked at some other egresses out on the Center Church.
I live directly across the street, I don't mean to interrupt, sir, but...
No, no, but from across the street?
I live directly across the street from where the proposed roundabout, we looked at, the red light that blinks in my bedroom, and so forth.
All I can tell you is we're sympathetic to residents along that road.
And I think one of the major issues is going to be that cut-through from Center Church, because if you have a red light there or some other traffic control mechanism there, when people are coming from work or whatever on Center Church Road, they're gonna take the easy way and cut through the park. And, you know, there's a speed limit, obviously, it's gonna be 25 or somewhere in there, but you and I both know, East McMurray Road doesn't even go 35.
Right.
You know, there's a major problem there all the time.
Absolutely.
So I would like, you know, suggest, you know, some alternative entrances.
But the one thing that will occur along this road that will discourage people from using it for the purpose you're discussing, is that there will be traffic calming elements incorporated in the road. In addition to that, there'll be a number of stop signs, so this will not be the quick way to get from Route 19 down to East McMurray Road in front of your property.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we gonna be kept informed?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Hey, Brian, Tom, is Tom around? Can you check the thermostat? We're gonna hang meat in here tonight. It's getting cold in there. All right. Yes.
I just wanna support her. Can I have a...
Yeah, sure. You haven't, you didn't speak the last time.
My name again is Charlene Salas. I live at 107 Whispering Heights Lane. I know that the priority seems to be the aquatic center, and I'm not trying to take away from that at all. I just wonder how much consideration has been given to the proposed aquatic center being a three-to-four-month revenue builder, where, and then also the racket center being paddle, a combination of paddle, tennis, and pickleball, and how much revenue could be brought in over a 12-month period of time? Just something to consider.
Well, absolutely, and we're also very aware of how much it costs us to put that bubble up and down every year.
But we also have that land that could possibly be sold and help, used to help.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Lee Hemington from Williams Avenue. It's just off of Center Church Road, going on the park from Center Church down to Route 19. And I imagine that you've studied the combined impact of traffic on Center Church Road going towards Route 19, and I just wondered if you could, I'm just concerned, since I go out that way, there's no traffic light at 19.
So you're on the Center Church portion that aligns the park?
The part between the church...
Along the golf...
No, not along the golf.
Closer to 19, so... Oh, okay.
Closer to 19, yeah. I live on a side street that actually does connect through to Club View, which comes up to Center Church, so it's like, you know...
Well, I think, you know, traffic study is something that we do in all developments, and that'll definitely be something that will be taken, and you'll be advised as to what those, you know, lots of details coming out on it.
So that hasn't happened yet?
No.
Do you have an idea when that might occur?
Yeah, well, the normal process, go ahead, Paul.
I was gonna say, the school district has done a traffic study. Part of that will, we will be incorporating in the presentation that will come to the Planning Commission this Thursday. They have site plan approval, so if you wanna discuss that, that's probably the time to do that.
Thank you.
What time is that Planning Commission meeting? Seven thirty?
Seven, I believe it's seven.
Seven. Seven o'clock, so if you wanted to come, it would be Thursday at seven.
This Thursday.
It's here, right?
Yes.
It's the planning...
I saw another hand, yes, sir.
I am Brian Seig, Gateshead Drive. I'm Montour Trail volunteer, as well as a dog owner, so my pitch is, I was presently backing the dog park portion of the thing. When you're on the trail, on the Arrowhead Trail and on the Montour portions of the trail in the township, you have the bikers, you have the joggers, you have the walkers, you have the dog people, none of which like each other.
[laughing]
It is hard to coexist in, within those groups.
The joggers, one, the joggers.
But, you know, yeah. So having the dog park portion of this plan, I think, is very good, very good news for us. Thank you.
We've had a lot of interest in the dog park.
For years.
For years.
Yes. Just can never find a place to go.
Yeah. All right. Any other hands, would like, anyone else? Ryan, you know if there's anyone in the back room that wants to come forward? All right.
Nope.
All right.